It is 5:30. I would like to call the fiscal year 25 taxpayer mileage rate. Milage public hearings order. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. We are here tonight to receive input from the community on the tax mileage rate proposed for this school year. The superintendent has proposed a mileage rate of 20.00 mils, which means that the mileage rate will remain the same as last year. We encourage and value public input into the school system's budget process. This is the second of three public hearings where the public will have an opportunity to have a voice. The first hearing was held this morning at 9:00 a.m. The last hearing will be held on Thursday, July 25th at 6:30 p.m. right here in the boardroom. The administration and board will consider all the input received at the hearing prior to adopting a mileage rate on Thursday, July 25th at our regular scheduled meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move Sandra Jackson Lett, second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda was present, has been presented by Sandra Jackson Lett, second by Jeanne Jones. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The agenda has been approved six to zero. At this time, I'll be turning it over to Dr. Oates for the superintendent's updates.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. At this time, I'm going to ask our chief financial officer, Ms. Joyce Lynn Smith, to take the podium to present the mileage rate hearing presentation.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Oates, board members and remaining in the community. Be speaking on our mileage rate for this year. Our FY '25 budget has been adopted. Our objective today is to propose a mileage rate that will fund the local revenue portion of this budget. Looking at the five-year digest history, you can see that the gross digest, if you scroll down to where the gross digest is, you can see that the gross digest has doubled from 2.9 billion in 2019 to 5.8 billion in the current year. At the same time, please note that the decrease in mileage rate over the years. And in 2021, we took the rollback. This slide visually represents the decrease in mileage rate since 2017. Rockdale has reduced the mileage rate by 5.32 mils, saving taxpayers over $50 million in six years. The proposed 20-mil rate for 2024 remains unchanged from 2023, no increase. However, due to an increase in assessed values and the addition of new properties, which is growth, this rate will generate additional revenue for the schools. This graph shows the increase in assessed values. The green portion represents the prior year digest amount, and the yellow is the increase in the reassessed values of those properties. It depicts how our home values are growing. So that yellow portion is growing over the years. That's the reassessments of your home and your properties. In this comparison, column three shows what our current year digest would look like if we took the rollback of 17.53 mils. Column two shows the 2024 digest with the reassessed values removed from the totals. And it also shows a 20-mil rate. Notice that both columns two and three show the same net taxes levied, the same revenue. So without the reassessment, our proposed 20-mil rate would generate the same taxes as taking the rollback. Without the reassessment, we would not have to advertise an increase, and we would not be required to hold this hearing. Also notice, both show a tax increase of 2.6%. And that tax levy is slightly, and that the tax levy is slightly more than 2023. This is due to growth. Growth or new taxable properties do not impact the rollback. Finally, in the last column, that shows the recommendation for today. The difference between the net tax levies compared to the rollback rate is the amount of additional tax levies directly attributable to reassessments. The recommended mileage rate is not the reason for the tax increases. The school system does not determine the assessed values of your properties. Factors impacting increased taxes. The tax increase to taxpayers is due to assessed values of existing properties increasing by 13.9% over last year. Additionally, the one-time homestead tax relief grant that Governor Brian Kemp approved last year only impacted the taxes of homeowners for 2023. That grant reduced the assessed values of homestead properties by an additional $18,000. The loss of these added exemptions helped to further intensify the perception that taxes have increased. Why didn't the county reduce its mileage rate? Well, for one, inflation. Everybody's seeing increasing goods and services, not just you, but the district as well. The loss of COVID funds, two, the loss of COVID funds that have supplemented our budget over the last few years are no longer available. And three, mandated increases. And on this sheet, you'll see those mandated increases. These are things that were imposed on us by the state. $3.7 million of that, $9.7 million increase were for increases in the step of teacher salary scale. So each step had to be increased by $2,500. And the employer share of health insurance for each covered certified staff member is rising from $1,580 per person per month to $1760 beginning this month. This equates to $21,120 per person per year. That's a 2.6% increase to our budget. $2.6 million increase to our budget. The employer share of health insurance for our classified members is rising from $1,195 per person per month to $1,580 in January. This equates to up to $17,420 per person. That's a $2.1 million increase to our budget. Teacher's retirement rate is going from 19.98 to 20.78. This amount is the employer cost that must be paid towards an employee's retirement. That's a percentage of their salary. For a person making $50,000, that equates to $10,390 for the year. And that's $1.1 million additional to our budget. The governor increased pay for bus drivers and nurses by 4.1%. Bus driver salaries are going from $19.94 an hour to $20.76. With these increases, there was no way our budget could remain the same without huge detriment to the students. All of these costs were mandated by the state. These changes impacted other districts as well. Each of the 12 districts listed has an increase in their budget. The average increase was 8.5%. Rockdale's increase was 8.24%. Last year, Dr. Oates recommended, and the board approved, an increase in the senior tax exemption. With this, we have seen an increase in the exemption amount, which reduces the amount the district receives from local taxes, but has saved money for the taxpayer. Inflation, the loss of COVID funds, mandated increases, and an increase in the property tax exemptions have all contributed to the increased need for the other district. As home values rise and our tax digest grows, it has negatively impacted our state funding. As you can see from the pie chart, in FY 2019, 34.3% of our budget was funded with local funds. This year, that percentage has increased to 48%. Rockdale, along with many other districts, are having to rely more on local funds. This screen just shows our teacher salary pay of $51,212 compared to other districts. And this is some information for your consideration. That completes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board? I'm sorry, we do have people wishing to address the board. So this is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personal matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or engaging in behaviors that disrupts the form of this meeting. I would like to first welcome Shabra Sledge to the podium.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board. I'm here to speak against maintaining the current mileage rate in light of recent increase in property values. While I wholeheartedly support our public schools and understanding the importance of funding education, I believe that keeping the mileage rate unchanged is not the most equitable solution for the community. Maintaining this same mileage rate despite the rise in property values will result in a significant increase in property taxes for homeowners. Many residents are already struggling with the cost of living, and this additional financial burden could exacerbate that situation. It is essential to consider the impact on families, particularly those on fixed incomes, who may find it difficult to absorb these higher taxes. While the intention to direct additional funds to public schools is commendable, the method of achieving this by leveraging increased property values is inherently regressive. Higher property taxes disproportionately affect lower and middle-income families. By rolling back the mileage rate, we can maintain a fair distribution of tax responsibilities and avoid placing undue stress on those who can least afford it. At one point earlier today, the superintendent highlighted a small percentage of high achievers in our school system regarding, you know, some of the progress we've made. Now, while we should indeed celebrate and support our high achievers, it is essential to recognize that the success of a few does not justify imposing a significant financial burden on the entire community. We need to ensure that all students, regardless of their academic standing, have access to quality education without disproportionately impacting the livelihood of our residents. They've also emphasized the need for additional funds to cover mandated increases in the school budget, such as raising teachers' salaries, et cetera. While there are critical and necessary expenditures, it is important to explore alternative funding solutions rather than placing the entire burden on homeowners. We should consider seeking additional state and federal funding grants and public-private partnerships to meet these financial requirements. Rather than relying on the fluctuating property values to generate additional revenue, we should seek sustainable and predictable funding sources for our public schools. This can include exploring alternate funding mechanisms such as grants, partnerships with local businesses, and even modest increases in sales tax. I'm gonna jump down here because my time is almost over, but I did have one more point I wanted to make, or several, but... One second. So again, a significant benefit to the community taxpayers if the mileage rate is rolled back is the reduction in our property tax burden. This means homeowners will see lower property tax bills, which help alleviate financial stress, especially for those on fixed incomes. And lastly, with regard to the loss of COVID funds and inflation, again, we need to rely more on looking at significant or finding balanced approaches that support both our educational institutions and the broader community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sledge. The next person is George Kellecek.
Good evening, George Kellecek. I have the Taxpayer Association, a worldwide association protecting the tax dollars. I'm degreed in management psychology, organizational behavior, and economics. In June, 214 residents lost their properties due to the fact that they could not pay their taxes. This is the highest ever in Rockdale County. Seventeen homes went to foreclosure. That's the highest in the history of Rockdale County. Facts, from 2018 through 2023, the city, the county, and the Board of Education, if you pay your taxes, all three of those, the net tax increase was 187%. Let's forget about mileage being reduced. Our taxes went up, folks. While our social security only went up 23%. The AARP Association and the state of Georgia reflects that the only growing area in our county is 18- to 24-year-olds and 50-plus. We're aging out of the system. You have to look at cost reduction. For example, the county adopted a recommendation of mine to reduce their F Ford 150 fleet by 50%. Over seven years, the county will save over $1 million. You need to look at cost reductions to make these tax increases go away. Walk into your schools and look at the waste of paper curriculum that has been paid by taxpayers and is not being utilized. You have to go to the spot to find out what's going on. Do any of you, I know one, two people do, do you attend the city meetings and the Board of Commissioner meetings on a timely basis to see what's going on? There's three silos, folks. We've got to get these folks together, all three of them, Board of Education, the county, and the city, so we can get these taxes reduced. I ask you to find a retired economist and a retired actuary so you can start doing these types of trends. You have to go to zero-based budgeting. Look at what Jack Welch did with General Electric Corporation. In 1980, I paid 14% interest rate on a home that I still own. Ronnie Reagan came in and said, "It's big government. That's the problem." We need to look at shifting people back to the schools and get our education numbers improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kellecek. Kim Clark?
Good evening, everyone. I'm fairly new to Rockdale County. And I'm a retired educator and definitely understand the process of increasing taxes. Kind of being new to Rockdale, definitely was kind of shocked by the fact that I live in the New Eastmore subdivision, and I'm taxed by county and city taxes. So my inquiry is very brief. It's, I'm wanting to know if these tax increases will both impact me by the city taxes and by the county taxes. And that's just my inquiry as I'm learning as a new resident of Rockdale and how this has impacted us and just not, I guess, not being informed of how things are increased so drastically as well as having the best interests of my fellow educators that I adore and appreciate and respect. But I did want to say that it has impacted my family and the residents of Eastmore subdivision. We are new to this community, glad to be in this community. However, wanted to know if the impact was going to increase us double through city and county. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I'd love to have Corliss Turner as next.
Good evening. I am Corliss Turner, the founder of Voices for Rockdale. I just have a quick statement that I would like to make. We are well aware that you're not raising the mileage rate, that it is the same mileage rate as last year. But because we know math and the property value has gone up, you are going to generate additional revenue. Mr. Kellecek spoke about the homes that were on the courthouse steps for sale. And I think Mandy North said that they are not here for the citizens, but here for the students. And I believe you also have the Duncan said, asked Justin if that was the reason these people were losing their home. That is why it's called a tax sale. In those homes, Mandy, are children. So that is affecting those children. And you should also be here for the students, for the citizens, because that's who you're getting the revenue from. And the school performance is not showing what we are paying for. Now, you all gave Dr. Oates a raise, $285,000. He drives an SUV, and he got a bonus with a failing school system. I think that our taxes should reflect what we are receiving from the school. I'm asking that you reduce the mileage rate so that it can benefit the citizens and help them. When you help the parents, you also are helping the children. So I ask that you kindly consider that. And then the COVID funds, you should never have been depending on that because you knew it was temporary, just like the rebate from the governor last year. You hired employees and you paid a salary. You kept those employees, so then you had to generate more revenue to continue to pay them. So I just want you all to know, to be transparent. And you all are very well aware of Voices for Rockdale and our open records requests. So we are very knowledgeable, and we share that with the citizens. So please be considerate of the citizens as well as the students that you're affecting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Denise Crambler?
Good evening, everyone. I am not new to the county. I have been here for 36 years, so I'm almost old as dirt, you know, so... But the issue tonight regarding the mileage rate, I think the issue that we have is that we did get our properties assessed drastically. Every property in this county. Mine went up unbelievably. And of course, I decided to, you know, go against that one. But I think that we are expecting a rollback. Any corporation, and I've belonged to quite a few of them over the years, and we even owned our own business. As the, you know, value of things go up, you would think that, okay, this is great. It's not great. It's not great for the taxpayers here to have to pay this kind of rate. As we talked about, we saw that the homes that have gone up on sale because they cannot afford the property taxes. Who are losing these homes? Yes, I heard you want to protect the children. Absolutely, you have to protect their parents. Those parents are losing their homes. Where are the parents and those children going? What did we just do to them? And these taxes going up, if you think that was a lot, I think it's going to be even worse. I think in another one, we talked about that the previous board meeting, Board of Education, you guys actually said that the student rate was decreasing. We're not getting, and the Board of Commissioners said that we can't even get new, young people into this county. Who's going to be raising families? Are you going to see the student numbers increase or continue to decrease? If it's decreasing, why are we having more money? I think there are plenty of ways to look at reducing the cost. Every corporation has had to do that all across, whether they're a private or public corporation. We are no different. This Board of Education is no different. You have to look at, how can we reduce the cost? What do you need and what do you want? Two different things. When I need to run my household, but what I'd like to have and want, two different things. So one of the questions I have is, what problem are we actually solving here by you guys getting more money? That assessment went up. Milage rate didn't change. You got more money. County's getting more money here. What are you solving by more money? I saw the thing, looks good, but I think there is a problem there. Decreasing students, why? You know, do we have a problem with the scores of these kids? Yes, we do. Why? Putting more money at isn't going to help. I've got some incredibly wonderful friends that are teachers, even a principal. So it's like, I understand the education system, but to me, it's like, you need the quality of teachers, not necessarily the numbers. Thank you.
Ms. Crambler, thank you for your time. And we have Plachet Lewis.
Good evening. My name is Plachet Lewis. I'm a 21-year resident of Rockdale County. I am a homeowner in this county. I live in the Four Seasons neighborhood off of Klondike Road. I'm a mom. I have a daughter who's a 2023 graduate of Rockdale County High School, who's now an upcoming sophomore at Fort Valley State University. I have a daughter who's a middle school student at Ray Davis. I have a young son who goes to school with me because I'm also an educator. I've been an educator for 24 years. There's been a lot of uproar in recent months about the increase in taxes, so much so that in this last election cycle, the citizens voted for major changes. I don't pretend to know all the legal terms or the meanings behind all the percentages, what comes behind taxes and mileage rates and all of that. All I know is that I was bothered by taxes and increase, and that it greatly impacted my family. And then due to the tax increases, my ESCO account was short, and that my monthly payments to my mortgage company increased $480 a month. I can't afford that. The tax increases are pricing me out of my home. I'm an educated woman with three degrees, that has a good job, and the county that I live, work, and play in and support is pushing me out of my own home. I was informed that I look at my property tax bill. We noticed that Rockdale County Public Schools receives 78% of that tax revenue. I just want to know what is being done with that money? People always try to pull at our heartstrings and say that it's for the kids. Well, I've been in education for long enough to know that everything that people say is for kids is not always for kids. Why can't we start by making better use of what we already have? I don't want the narrative to be that the citizens of Rockdale County don't want our teachers and staff to get a raise, because that's not true at all. They deserve a raise. The problem is that the board and the system that they work for can't keep taxing the citizens to death. They can't keep demanding more money without being held accountable. The system has to demonstrate that they are fiscally responsible with what they already have. They have to live within a budget, just like they are forcing the citizens of Rockdale County to live within a budget. I can't go to my job in county to say, "My taxes are going up, so I need you to pay me more money." So I need Rockdale County to figure out what to do with the money that they are getting and stop trying to put the citizens of Rockdale County into debt. I would love for an independent consulting firm to come in and examine the structure of the board and the system from the top down. A study needs to be done of the positions at the county office to determine which are necessary and which positions can be eliminated. A compensation and classification study can be completed by an independent auditor or consulting team. A position analysis questionnaire can be provided to non-instructional staff. This questionnaire is designed to collect important job content information about the employee's position. The questionnaire can aid the employees in describing their position, their responsibilities, their essential duties. And then from there, the consultants can weed out any positions deemed essential and non-essential. And then that can eliminate wasteful spending, thus saving the taxpayers money. I want the board to not just look at this as a numbers and percentages thing. We are human beings with families and lives. We are your neighbors, your family members. Some of us are still tornado victims that still haven't even been able to come back home yet. Now is just not the time for this. We need a rollback. This is not the time.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
As previously stated, we do value your opinion, your voice, your input on the mileage rate. It is now 5:59 p.m., and we have to move to the regular session. What I do invite you all to do is stick around for all the people that I have cards for, and then you can make your comments in the public comment section of the next session. So at this time, it is 5:59 p.m. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
Second, Justin.
A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by just... A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Janie and seconded by Justin. The meeting is now concluding at 5:59 PM, 6:00 PM. I'm sorry. All in favor? Those opposed? All right, six to zero. Okay? It is, it is time for the regular work session, but you are all invited to continue with your public comment during the public comment section of the work session because the designated time for the public hearing was only half an hour, and we have more than we can facilitate within those half an hour. So you guys can still make your comments during the public session of this work session. Okay? So as I go through the agenda, you'll see where you can make comments as well. You're welcome. It is 6:01 PM. I'd like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education Work Session to order. Ms. Brown is joining us virtually. Do I hear a motion to approve the agendas presented?
So moved, Justin.
Second, Kate.
A motion to approve the agenda has been presented by Justin, seconded by Janie Jones. Is any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved, six to zero, five to zero. And this is where we will now recognize visitors who would like to address the board. And to continue over from our other session, Larry Cox is next. But before you begin, Mr. Cox, let me just read the script. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personal matter, or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, using obscene or profane language, making slanderous remarks, or engaging in behavior that disrupts the decorum of this meeting. Again, welcome, Larry Cox.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to say that I've heard a lot of people come up here and speak so far, and there are a lot of other people who want to speak. And there are a lot of people that are behind me in these seats. And what we see happening here is we see taxes being increased. And I know we got this presentation and the words perception of a tax increase were used. There is no perception of a tax increase. It is a tax increase. One of the reasons you have a full room of people is because you are misleading people with that statement. It is a perception of a tax increase. If I paid $1,000 last year and I pay $2,000 this year, that's an increase. If my property value goes up and you do not accept any rate but other than the rollback rate, it is an increase. We have to understand it's math. You guys are educators. I mean, you run an educational system. The process of setting the tax rate is a mathematical formula, which we take the assessed value and a multiplier. The military rate is a multiplier. The multiplier with the assessed value sets a tax rate. And we have decided to increase our taxes. But I do understand we're going to have to raise those taxes because you passed a budget that requires taxes to be passed, increased. What I recommend moving forward is that we change the process by which the budget is set, that the board have more input in the way that the budget is set. State law allows that, studied that quite in depth, and have had legal advice regarding that. So I know that's possible. I intend, when I get, and a few people don't know, I've been elected to the board and I'll take office in January. I intend to make proposals when I'm on the board to amend the budget process so that the budget is considered more by the board. What we've got to understand is this, the people behind me don't perceive that there has been a tax increase. They know there has been a tax increase, and they're tired of being told that what they know isn't real. That's why there was an uproar in this county, and that's why an individual was elected to this school board when an incumbent has not been beat in over 50 years in Rockdale County. That should send this board a message. When I get on this board, I intend to invoke change. I ran on change and I will invoke change, and I will stand for the citizens of Rockdale County because the citizens of Rockdale County are parents. It is our duty to represent the students.
Mr. Cox, thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Avi Gaden.
My name is Avi Gaden, and I've been a resident of Rockdale County for 23 years. I appreciate the presentation and helping us to understand that you're not raising the military rate. It's the property taxes that have increased, which is generating the additional revenue. And I do understand the sentiment that you also have the option to roll back, even you can lower the military rate. Another thing that I observed is that you mentioned the mandated increases, however you failed to mention the reduction in spending. And so it's not two sides, it's not a full picture. We need to reduce spending. And so that would have been nice for you to show us how you plan to reduce spending. One area, and it's, it's behavior that was done in the past that comes to haunt us in the present. You all made the decision to increase the superintendent's salary. That's spending. In Newton County, one of the board members here, maybe not here right now, but one of the board members told me that the salary is relatively low compared to county similar. So I went to research a county similar, Newton County. Newton County has 18,785 students. Rockdale County has 15,601 students. The superintendent in Newton County makes $222,000. The superintendent in Rockdale County makes $285,000. The median income in Newton County is 70,000. The median in household income in Rockdale County is 73,000. There is no justification for paying, for paying our superintendent as much as we're paying him for the type of results that we're receiving in Rockdale County. If this is the practice throughout this board, then we can't reduce spending. We need to show that we're going to reduce spending. Then we could roll back the military rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaden. Walter Bannister.
Good afternoon, or good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Walter C. Bannister, Operation Officer, U.S. Army, retired. What I'd like to say is I oppose the increase in taxes. I listened to a lot of people here talk today, and I'm not going to repeat exactly what they're saying, but I just want to mention a couple of things. I have a background in project management. We, being in the Army, as a former military officer working in the Army, we have an obligation that we have to meet. Teachers have an obligation that they have to meet. You all are no different than what we are, okay? There's something that we call solutions. And those solutions that has to be done by the people who are elected officials of Rockdale County, they go into these think tanks as we did as project managers in the U.S. Army. Not by linear thinking, but by critical thinking. If you're getting paid that much money in a salary, you should be able to justify the actual spending and approving of raising taxes for every homeowner here in Rockdale County. But you mentioned COVID funds. That shouldn't even have been on the table. Shouldn't have been on the table at all. Okay? I understand from just the facts that I read, there's 5,000 students, less staff supposed to be actually attending school here in Rockdale County, which is not the case. I also understand that there's no exemptions for us as homeowners that we have actually been receiving for this particular tax increase. And when we talk about the tax increase, taxes, since I've been here for 15 years, it then went up actually 80%. I'm representing the homeowners of Millstone Manor subdivision right off of Gee's Mills Road. My particular property taxes have actually went up from somewhere around $1,800 to about little over $5,000. Can I afford it? I'm not going to say yes or no, but it is attributed to the taxes that's been here, and that's in the 15-year timeframe. So my last statement is solutions, critical thinking. The people that're sitting here at this board today, you all should be in the think tank, and y'all should be coming up with the hard decisions, not by taxing the people that's behind me, it's by coming up with other ways, from speaking with the chairman and his associates, which he goes up to Atlanta and these other places in Wisconsin and things of this nature, and come up with valuable solutions to help the people of Rockdale County versus destroying houses and homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bannister. Gail Owens.
Good evening. I'm Gail Owens. I'm a resident here, actually in the city of Conyers. So to answer the other lady's question, yes, you do pay, I do pay city, county taxes as well, too. So I get two bills. And not only am I a citizen, I'm also a business owner in the city of Conyers. So I get a city bill, city tax bill, and a county tax bill. I also have inherited 10 properties from my father, who is now deceased. So they are low-income rental properties in the Millstead community and the surrounding in the north Rockdale. So I know a lot about paying property tax bills. I probably paid $50,000 in taxes last year from all the bills that I had to pay. This is just the file for this year for my personal home. When I got my tax assessment, last year, we were locked in for three years, my home value was at 429. Needless to say, I was surprised, knew I was going to get an increase. Needless to say, when I got my assessment, my property value went up to 814,000. My tax bill assessment went from 6,800 to now 12,671. This is without homestead, but nonetheless, this is what I'm fighting with the county right now. So a 20 mil means a lot to me as a business owner and as a resident of this county. Again, with the rental properties, they are low income. They can't pay the rent that I charge now. I can't pass these expenses on because they can't afford to pay the rent. I've already had to evict several, I've had to sell some of the properties because I cannot continue to pay the increases. As an accountant who runs my, my husband's business here locally, I know about budgeting, but I also know about cutting expenses. Just because you have a budget does not mean you have to spend every dime of that budget. So I'm here as a fourth generation. My family goes back over 100 years in this community. We can't lose, we can't afford these increases. And I ask tonight for you to seriously consider taking the rollback rate. There's a lot of people coming in the community, but there's also a lot of people that have been in this community for a really long time that are losing their homes, and it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Nicole, I think it says Leichner?
Hello, everybody. I am here on behalf of the homeschool families here in this county, those of us who either pulled our children out of your schools or moved here and said, no way. I'm the latter. I moved here and said, there's no way. You're dumbing my children down. Okay? My kids came from a school that was eight out of 10, nine out of 10, on the 10 out of 10 scale, school ratings. When you guys increased my taxes last year and this year, you don't understand that us homeschool kids, us homeschool families, we pay for our kids' education 100%. Every curriculum, every book, every art project, every everything comes out of my pocket on top of the taxes I send to your schools. Okay? And I have no problem with that because it takes a village to educate our babies. Okay? Education is that important? I'm good with paying my fair share of taxes. Key word, fair share. Okay? When I purchased my home, it was a rehab home at $141,000. Our taxes have raised up to almost $5,000 when we were only paying about 1,200. Okay? You know what that did to my mortgage? I'm also a cancer patient who hasn't worked in 10 years. My husband is the sole provider for a family of seven. We have five boys, 18, 15, 11, and twins who are on the spectrum that are seven. I also handle their IEPs, their ABA therapy. I do it all. Do you think I can afford for you guys to increase the mills on this, considering that the property increases due to developments have completely raised our taxes on top of destroying my home? Okay? So my home is sinking and falling apart. My taxes have been raised, and you guys are going, what, another step further? On top of I have to educate my children because you guys can't. How does that make sense to you guys? I am not the only parent. I live in Mountain Valley Estates, just in a two-block radius. There are six homes that are either virtual schooling or homeschooling. Because your school system is failing. Do you think I can afford a new SUV? No. I drive a 2010 Town and Country. But yet, your superintendent, where I cannot send my kids, my kids who have always been public school educated, football, track, karate, wrestling, basketball, chess team, band, my kids are amazing, and they could be an asset to your school system. However, they don't want to go to your school system. The moment they seen the ratings of your schools, they were like, Mom, do we really have?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for the comment. Charlotte Gellert.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, School Board, and Superintendent. I'm Charlotte Gellert. I've been here since 1971. My five children went to school here in Rockdale County, graduated from Rockdale County Schools. We moved to Rockdale County because the school system was good back in 1971. We, we got our annual assessment notices in April. It's, it showed the increase in all the assessment values. According to the school system's calendar, they started, the CFO starts discussing the tax digest with city and county personnel in March, in April, in May. So the CFO in the school system is aware of how high these assessments are going to be and how much of an increase there's going to be since the previous year. Then you adopt a budget. It all starts with a budget. If you increase your budget, you have to increase the revenue that you need to raise to fund that budget. I've seen, I went to the budget hearings, I've been to the board meetings. I haven't heard anything about any efforts to reduce. to reduce the budget. I've seen the slides on the mandated increases. You knew they were coming. You didn't make any efforts to offset those increased expenses with minimal increase in revenue. I don't have anything really more to say. The increase in the local revenue from last year to this year in your budget is from $181 million. I'm sorry. The local portion of your budget last year was $80,718,000. This year, the local revenue is $104,720,000. That's another $24 million that you're going to expect to get and need to get from the county residents through these increased assessments. I would love to see the rollback rate also. You didn't even consider, if not the rollback rate of 17 point whatever, to even 18 or 19, anything below 20. It wasn't even considered. And no consideration of how to cut the budget to not need as much revenue as you're going to get with these assessments. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Tina Hobbs. Tina, if you need more time, I can go to someone else.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tina Hobbs. I've been here for over 60 years. So I'm like dirt also. But I'm reading something from Michelle Garcia because she is sick. The Georgia Milestone Integrate Assessment from 2002 to 2023. English Arts, 32.2% at or above proficiency level, 67.8% below proficiency level. Math, 22.7% at or above proficiency level, 77.3% below proficiency level. Physical Science, 66.2% at or above proficiency level, 33.8% below proficiency level. Science, 26.6% at or above proficiency level, 73.4% below proficiency level. Social Studies, 31.6% at or below, at or above proficiency level, 68.4% below proficiency level. Per the Georgia Milestone 10th Grade Assessments from 2022 to 2023. American Literature, 41.7% at or above proficiency level, 58.3% below proficiency level. Biology, 57.8% at or above proficiency level, 42.2% below proficiency level. Coordinate Algebra, 30% at or above proficiency level, 70% below proficiency level, 23% worse than last year. U.S. History, 34.5% at or above proficiency level, 65.5% below proficiency level, 10% worse than last year. American Literature, 31.9% at or above proficiency level, 70.5% developing or below proficiency level. Biology, 26.8% at or above proficiency level, 55.5% developing or below proficiency level. A lot of these things are below, and we've been that way for years now, and it's not gotten any better. I don't understand. I've asked a lot of questions, but if the kids are not learning, what are we paying for? That's my question. And that's all right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs. Callis Turner, please.
And I'm Callis Turner. The information that Tina Hobbs was reading came from the State of Georgia, the Board of Education. And that's what those figures came for. I'm going to continue. The coordinated algebra is 15.3% at or above proficiency level, 46.4% developing or below proficiency level. U.S. History, 23.5 at or above proficiency level, 55.4% developing or below proficiency level. Enrollment in the spring of 2022 to 2023, this is also from the stateboardofeducation.gov. Demographics and Superintendent's salaries. Rockdale has 15,198 students. The superintendent is at $285,000. Newton has 17,986 students, and the superintendent is 221,913. Henry, 42,915, $350,034. Atlanta, 48,290. Salary is 381,762. Clayton, 50,495. Salary, 323,982. DeKalb, 88,562 students. Salary, 415,866. Salary, 452,711. The average annual salary of a superintendent in Georgia is $173,225 as of June of 27 to 2024, and that's according to salary.com. But the typical salary falls between $141,508 and $209,24, depending on the city and many other factors, including education certification, additional skills, and years of employment in your profession. According to gov salaries.com, Dr. Terry Oats was employed with the Rockdale County Board of Education in 2018 and currently making $284,000 or $285,000. And that is 67% higher than the average superintendent salary in the state of Georgia and 572% higher than the median salary of all Rockdale County Board of Education employees. With the loss of 2,000 less students than last year and the worst Georgia Milestone Assessment Test scores in math history, the Rockdale County School Board needs to ask themselves why.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. George Kalachek.
Change is inevitable. I think you've, this board and directors over here have heard from citizens. There's a lot of skill sets in this room that want to help this Board of Education. You need to take the opportunity to give us a call, meet with us after this meeting, and let's formulate a group to help this Board of Education move in the right direction. You've got military folks here. You've got business owners. You've got a bunch of retirees in here. We're aging out of the system, folks. We deem the next generation to move to Rockdale County. But with the current situation that we're in, it's not going to happen. We've seen a reduction in students over the last few years. It gets back to cost per student. You know, you look at economic development, and the information that I've shared with this group tonight has already been shared with the county. Now, there's a new administration coming in. I think there's going to be some great things that are going to happen at the Board of Commissioners level. We're going to have a change in this board. I think some great things are going to come. You're going to have to look at change. And again, the birth rate in the state of Georgia is going down. We're not going to have an increase, folks. It's inevitable. Again, an economist and an actuary retired to help this board move forward and help our education system move forward is inevitable. We're here to help you. Reach out your hands to us. We're not against you. We want to help you. Do you understand? You know, aggregate cost in construction? Good old Mr. Bootnseek over here, you know what he's faced with? A 25% increase in building costs. Concrete has gone up 29.3%. How are we going to pay for this? Folks, we've got to reduce our costs. It's plain and simple. We've got to get off this gravy train and get on the right train. Again, we're here to help you. Ask us. Let's go to a five-minute conversation and not three minutes. Let's have town hall meetings so we can express our concerns to help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your comments. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Cabinet's update. Dr. Oats, please introduce your cabinet members.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. First up from our Office of Human Resources is Ms. Michelle Stevens, who's our Chief Human Resources Officer.
Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair North, Superintendent Oates, board members, and distinguished guests. Tonight, I have an action item related to the Paid Parental Leave Act. This paid parental leave law was updated on July 1st, and some of the key points are as follows. The updated benefit is six weeks of paid parental leave. It was previously three weeks of paid parental leave. Qualifying employee, there were no changes there, but a full-time employee with six months of continuous employment and employees who were paid on an hourly basis must have worked 700 hours in the preceding six months. Qualifying life event, there were no changes there either, but the birth of a child of an eligible employee, the birth of a minor child for adoption with an eligible employee or the placement of a minor child for foster care with an, for an eligible employee. Bye, Amy. Oh, wait, sorry, guys. All right. The paid parental leave revision is as follows. The superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt the proposed amendments to Board Policy G A R H B, Paid Parental Leave, so that Board Policy complies with the requirements of House Bill 1010 of this year, which revised the paid parental leave law. The rationale is as follows. The Georgia Legislature amended OCGA 452017 during the 2024 legislative session. The statute requires local boards of education to increase the number of hours permitted for paid parental leave and to specify that individuals employed full-time by a local education agency are deemed eligible employees under the law. The amendment took effect on July 1, 2024, and this proposed revision aligns Board Policy with state law. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Because there is a lot of information in this. How would staff members be informed of the changes?
We're required to inform them upon hire and then once annually after that. So we are working on a flyer for this year that we'll send out via email, and then we'll do it when they're hired and then every year moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And Dr. Smith Dixon coming from the Office of Student Support Services, as well as April Fallon.
Well, good evening. Chairwoman Brown on the screen there. Vice Chair Duncan, thank you. Members of the board, Dr. Oats, cabinet, and guests. So I stand before you tonight kind of with my same song and dance to amend a couple of contracts related to school psychology. So I want to reiterate, this is not asking for additional funding. It is simply moving money from one contract to another. And even though we keep having to do this, I appreciate your support because it looks like we will go into the school year fully staffed with school psychologists, which is very different than last year. So we are so happy about that. Okay. All right. So the first recommendation. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the amended contract completed annually for recurring services for Horizon Psychological Assessment Center as a private provider for psychological services, totaling $648,000. So $200,000 was already approved in May, but that was just for contracted evaluations. They have now been able to actually staff us with three school psychologists, which is better than the contracted evaluations. So we're really happy to move that money from one agency to this one. This contract is contingent upon the approval by the superintendent and general counsel. The rationale, due to personnel shortages, we must contract with Horizon Psychological Assessment Center for psychological services. Staffing and contract evaluations are necessary to obtain critical information about students' cognitive ability, academic achievement, and specific skills related to the learning process. This amendment allows for school psychologist staffing and contracted evaluations. So the financial impact, $648,000. Again, $200,000 was already approved in May, so this is an additional $448,000 being moved to this contract. And then last? Okay. So Tara Geiser presented the contract for the Stepping Stones Group in June, and at that time, it was for occupational and physical therapy services. But they are able to provide us with a school psychologist. So this recommendation is for the superintendent. Will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the amended contract completed annually for recurring services for the Stepping Stones Group as a private provider for psychological services, totaling $229,580. The original contract approved in June was for $1,877,580. The contract is contingent upon the approval by the superintendent and general counsel. Rationale, due to personnel shortages, we must contract with Stepping Stones Group for psychological services. Again, the staffing is necessary to obtain critical information about students' cognitive ability, academic achievement, and specific skills related to the learning process. So in summary, the financial impact, $229,580 from general funds, which is increased. It increased $152,000 from that original contract approved back in June. Any questions about either of those?
Yes, Ms. Fallon. You said that money's being moved, that there's no additional impact on the budget. Where's the money being moved from?
So we've kind of just, we've had several agencies where I've presented contracts. And the original one, Soliant, that was our biggest contract. They have not been able to find school psychologists for us. So I'm simply moving money from their contract to the companies that can actually find people for us.
Thank you for that, Claire.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good evening. As a new item or new items for action... As a new item or new items for action this evening, we'll be sharing information based on the 2024 Title IX regulations that were recently released. And so just as a point of background, we do have Board Policy J C A C as well as Board Policy G A E B. And these policies are about sexual harassment. And so it is important to state that Rockdale County Public Schools, that we prohibit discrimination based on sex in its education programs. And so under no instance would we allow discrimination, harassment, or any other unlawful treatment. And so we already have these policies that are on the book. But based on the significant changes in our 2024 Title IX regulations, it is requiring us to make these adjustments. And so those regulations were made available in April, and they must go into effect August 1, 2024. And it is important to state that those policies are not retroactive. And so what that means, as you are looking at this law, is that we will be operating under two different regulations and guidance. And so, for example, if we receive information from a relative to a student about something that has happened or consideration for harassment, and that consideration is prior to August 1, 2024, then we would be required to follow the procedures that were outlined prior to that particular point in time. If we are investigating or following up on something on or after August 1st, then we will be operating based on the brand-new procedures. And so the total number of pages, and anyone interested, you're welcome to read them, is 1,561. So we have been really relying on technical assistance from a number of the attorneys and agencies who have been providing lots of great information and also working closely with our own general counsel. And if you are asking kind of what is the big idea, there are really significant changes with the 2024 regulations. And so for those of you who were not in the weeds of Title IX, the difference is it's really more about it's provided a lot more flexibility. And so as an example, parents have, families have more flexibility in how they can actually file the complaint, how they can share that information with us. There is more flexibility in the number of individuals who can actually participate in the complaint process. And so they have really tried to relax some of the requirements to make it more about a process and flexibility versus regimented procedures. And so as a point of reference, another kind of big change is that initially the Title IX regulations were really more about sexual harassment. And sexual harassment now was one portion, but it's really the large umbrella is actually sex discrimination. And so when you are considering sex discrimination, you're looking at it from various perspectives. And so such as sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, and even pregnancy and related conditions is a very relatively new area for us. And so what does that mean? That means that if a student or the family member disclosed to us that that student is pregnant or expecting, that we have certain responsibilities to make sure that we share information about their rights. And so Dr. Patrice Graham is not with us this evening, but she is actually our Title IX Coordinator. She has been serving in that role. She has already worked closely. And something else that is important to know is that each year all employees must go through Title IX training. And so we have already updated that compliance module to make sure that that information is current. And something else that is important, which has created a lot more flexibility, when we get information about Title IX, we're always triaging that information through the perspective of, is it severe? Is it pervasive? And is it objectionally offensive? And we're doing that from the perspective of a reasonable person. The new regulation is not based on "and," it's based on "or." So what that means is the floodgates are a lot wider with what could constitute under this Title IX regulation. And so the recommendation for this evening for sexual harassment of employees, I'll let Michelle, Mrs. Stevens, share that action item.
Thank you. As Dr. Smith Dixon mentioned, Patrice Graham, Dr. Graham is the student contact for Title IX. I'm the employee point of contact for Title IX. So the recommendation this evening for Policy G A E B, Sexual Harassment of Employees, the superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt the proposed amendments to Board Policy G A E B, Sexual Harassment of Employees, so that Board Policy complies with the requirements of the new 2024 Title IX regulations. The rationale is as follows. The U.S. Department of Education amended the Title IX regulations that implement Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. The 2024 Title IX regulations take effect on August 1, 2024. And the proposed changes to Board Policy G A E B, Sexual Harassment of Employees, will align Board Policy with the new 2024 Title IX regulations. There is no financial impact.
And so the second item for action this evening will be for Board Policy J C A C, Sexual Harassment of Students. The recommendation is the superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt the proposed amendments to the Board Policy J C A C, Sexual Harassment of Students, so Board Policy complies with the requirements of the new 2024 Title IX regulations. The rationale is the United States Department of Education amended the Title IX regulations that implement Title IX of Education Amendments of 1972. The 2024 Title IX regulations take effect on August 1, 2024. And the proposed changes to the Board Policy J C A C, Sexual Harassment of Students, will align to Board Policy with the new 2024 Title IX regulations. No financial impact. Are there any questions? Sure.
The court might be the person to ask this to. Do we, what do we currently have in place as a preventive measure to prevent student-on-student sexual harassment? Does that, you understand what I'm asking?
I do understand. So one thing is it really does come back from the behavioral interventions and supports framework that we already have in place. And so it does come back to effective implementation of positive interventions and support the whole PBIS framework. We're also implementing a new anti-bullying model. And so from last year, we worked on No Place for Hate. And so you're going to hear more about that this fall as a number of our schools have been recognized in that particular area. We've also worked closely with our prevention and our intervention team. And then it is case by case. So kind of the model is one call, that's all. We train our building-level administrators and teams that whenever there is any concern in their building with Title IX, that they give Dr. Patrice Graham a call. We log that information. We work closely with the school and we observe the patterns. And so going back to what you've said, you've asked Board Member Jones in one particular instance, when we noticed that there was a trend, then we recognized that that was much bigger than just triaging individual concerns. It also does come back to developmentally appropriate practices. And so in some instances, we've spoken back with the lead counselor and we've had conversations about, listen, we've already done the training on good touch, bad touch. Maybe it's a great idea for us to revisit this training because we noticed this trend across a particular grade or a particular class. So we are having those conversations.
And I can add, I can't elaborate because Dr. Denise Richardson would be the best person to answer, but I believe she said that it's also addressed through the health and PE curriculum.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Okay. I would like to take this point of professional privilege to share a follow-up to the school food services presentation that was delivered earlier. I believe in June, the summer has really gotten away from us. But Rockdale County Public Schools has been approved for a community eligibility provision. And so we are working closely with Mrs. Ball Department to make sure that we can get that information out to our families. And so what does that mean for us? That means effective for this school year, that all of our students, unfortunately not adults, but all of our students will be able to eat their breakfast and their lunch meals at absolutely no cost to their families. Now, that does not cover their snacks and their à la carte. Obviously, that's an opportunity that you can still use your My School Bucks feature. And if you add that money to your My School Bucks, we encourage students to get that ice cream, to get that extra juice. And so we will not be collecting the free and reduced meal applications based on that because you do not need those applications in order to participate in the program.
Share, 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 share.
Yep, thanks.
Ms. Joyce Smith, our CFO, will be coming back with our financial report.
Good evening again. I actually just have two items. Oops, sorry. For recommendations. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Public Board of Education adopt the millage rate of 20 mills for the '24-'25 school year. The rationale is each year the board is responsible for adopting a millage rate to be used to collect local property taxes needed by the school system to meet their budgetary requirements. Attached for reviews, the five-year history of the tax digest. Also have the school food services budget. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education formally adopt the FY '25 school food services budget. Georgia Department of Education requires Board of Approval on all operating budgets. That's it. Question?
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Madam Vice Chair, if I may, I believe this is the portion for the superintendent's update. And so I want to first thank all of our public comment participants for your participation and for your sharing your views and perspectives on our deliberation on the millage rate. And I just want to say that this obviously is part of the democratic process where you get to share your concerns so that the board representatives can hear those concerns and they can take that under consideration as they deliberate on this particular pending action item that will be voted on by the full Board of Education at our board regular session, which will be next Thursday. I do want to also share that I think it, what I would wish and what I would hope is that we can have a discussion, even where we disagree, may disagree, about what the millage rate should be fixed at and its impact on students and its impact on taxpayers and property owners in a good faith spirit. So one of the things that I talk about, I'm in my 31st year as a public educator and in my seventh year as superintendent of Rockdale County Public Schools. And I've worked in three previous metropolitan Atlanta school districts. So I have a wide breadth and depth of experience and perspective. When I chose to become an educator more than three decades ago, I have to be honest and admit I knew nothing about millage rate and all of these things because I chose to be an educator because I wanted to positively impact the lives of students. And I also knew that those students whose lives I would seek to impact would not only be students who were the highest achieving students. That's why I chose to be an educator. I started my career off as a teacher assistant, serving two teachers. One was a teacher of students with emotional behavior disorders. And the second was a teacher who served students with specific learning disabilities. And that taught me to really, really reflect on the least of these and those who may have greater needs. The reality is that over the years, you know, I know many of you have said you've lived in Rockdale County anywhere from 12, 15 years to over 60, in the case of Ms. Hobbs. And the reality is that I'm sure you've seen changes over time in terms of students' needs within the school district. And the reality is that we have more students entering at the point of pre-K and kindergarten who have greater needs than what we have seen in the past. That's not an excuse, but those are people's children. And I would ask that we talk about our school districts. In other words, the school district doesn't have to be a failing school district in order for you to make your case for lower taxes. And I think that I heard some data that was shared and attributed to G A D O E from 2022. And what I also heard was there was some equating students who scored in the developing range as failing, which is not the way the Department of Education defines that. They define developing as partial proficiency. The reality is, and it may be inconvenient if you are a parent or grandparent or even an administrator who want students, all students, to perform at the highest levels, the reality is that won't always be the case. And that's why we exist as educators, to work with those students to get their achievement levels up. And that takes a lot of time for a lot of students, particularly students who may have some language, limited English proficiency, or they may have some special education needs, or may not be in either of those. It may just be that they need more time to grasp certain concepts and they need additional tutoring beyond the instructional day. And so I want to challenge us to be able to agree that we can have spirited, robust, and legitimate debate about what the level of taxation should be without the reflexive view that we have to declare the school district failing. Listen, I've always said, I've always been a public educator, but I've always said that I never, ever, ever have questioned a parent's decisions about where they think their child can be best educated. And some parents choose private schools, some parents choose homeschool, right? Some parents choose charter schools that are private charter schools. And sometimes they choose public charter where school districts participate and include public charters. And that's, and I've never had an issue with that. My issue obviously has been with the funding of public education and when there are mechanisms for diverting funds from public education, where 90-plus percent of our students, the only option they have is public education. So we've got to make sure that public education is successful because it's the only option for the bulk of the most of our students in our communities. And so what I would like to share is this, there's another thought, which is to say that when I share or when other district employees or school employees share achievement data, that we're only referring to the highest achieving students. With all due respect, that's not true. So when I share with you that in 2023, we enjoyed our highest four-year core graduation rate to date for the class of 2023, and it was among the highest graduation rates in metropolitan Atlanta, that involves all students. Students who graduate from high school, and we graduate over 1,000 every year, they represent the full range of students' abilities, right? And when I talk about the fact that our CTAE graduation rate is almost at 100%, students from all across the learning spectrum pursue a career pathway. Even some students who have an IEP, which means that they receive specific special education services. Many of our pathway completers include students who have an IEP who receive specialized services. So there should not be the thought that when we talk about good data, that we're only referring to the top performing students. Yes, many of the indicators we share are about students who tend to perform well. When we talk about advanced placement achievement, we offer advanced placement courses for students who take those courses. And we offer AP exams that go along with and align with those courses. And so I think it's important for us to share and report out to you how our students who take AP exams perform. And for each of the last several years, we've seen increases among our students who take the AP exams, who have scored at the highest three levels for AP examinations, which is Level 3, 4, and 5. Last year, we had about 300-plus students who scored at Levels 3, 4, and 5. We just got our 2024 AP exam data, and we had over 530 students who scored at Levels 3, 4, and 5. We should, we should all celebrate that. The fact of that matter does not in any way take away from your arguments about what you feel taxation should be, but we should not try to explain away or excuse away legitimate achievement that our students are experiencing. The other thing I would share is that we have had a resurgence of students who are identified as AP scholars. At some point throughout the last few years, all three of our high schools have been named AP honor schools. It's also the craze that we've increased our gifted student eligibility and enrollment. Listen, we have students who have special ed needs, but we also have students who have gifted education needs. And we've got to make sure that we're providing a good education and increasing achievement among all of our students across the full learning spectrum. Those students who require additional specialized services, maybe through special ed. maybe through English language learners, maybe through five oh four R T I support services. I know you may not know what all these acronyms mean, but they're specialized services and supports that students have to receive all the way to and including students who require advanced placement uh uh coursework and gifted enrollment. We've increased our gifted enrollment and eligibility and for the first time in the last few years, we've exceeded the state's threshold of ten percent or more. Yes, it's true. Absolutely, it's true. And so the reality is we don't have to try to say that that's not true to make our point. As a parent, you can make your decision about where you want your students to be educated. But we have fifteen, over fifteen thousand students here and many of these students are achieving at high levels and we do not need to besmirch or denigrate or misrepresent their achievement because we made a choice or you may have made a choice as an individual parent and you're entitled to that choice about where you wish for your students to be educated. Other data that I can share is that we will be getting our two thousand twenty-four Georgia Milestones data. It'll be unembargoed and released next Friday, the twenty-sixth. That information, there will be a press release that will come from Ms. Cindy Ball. I'll be sharing that information with the board. Uh we're already able to look at that data, uh but it's, we can't share it now because the state has, has not unembargoed it yet. But we're going to see gains in third and fifth grade reading proficiency. We're going to see gains in U S history, which we've been waiting for and and expecting to see in the E O C. We're going to see gains at middle school all across the board in reading and E L A. And that's a good thing. That should be celebrated. Even as we acknowledge appropriately that we have so much more improvement and progress to make. Two things can be true at one time, that we've seen some really unprecedented gains over the last several years, even while we know that we continue to have challenges that we've got to overcome and meet with respect to literacy and numeracy as it relates to students. Also, I should share with you that our third, fifth and eighth graders on the two thousand twenty-three Georgia Milestones assessment, they increased their reading proficiency level over the two thousand twenty-two Georgia Milestones data. There is a requirement by the federal government that schools uh be identified and placed on a list as low performing if they fail to meet certain benchmarks. Well, this is my seventh year as superintendent and in that time, no schools in Rockdale County Public Schools has been identified and placed on the federally designated list of lowest performing schools. And that's important because we have school just, and listen, if you happen to have a school that's on that list, that doesn't mean you should be banished. It means that you have some students at certain schools who need some additional support. And the, the, the state provides additional funding and support services for those schools that are identified on this list, right? This is about C S I, T S I schools. Again, we are an acronym heavy profession and I'm going to try to avoid hauling out acronyms, but that's very important. The other thing I will point out is that we're, we're committed to making sure that we meet workforce demands by offering path, career pathways that are meaningful to students where they can get employment right away. So to that end, we've added, did you know, raise your hand if you knew that we've added barbering and cosmetology and that we're going to be uh adding H VAC certification program in the fall. Well, I see that, I see a couple of hands, which is great, but that's new information for others and that's great. We know the need for H VAC uh programming for our students and we have a welding program, which we've had for some time. And we have many students who are in that program who are already earning quite nice compensation, working part-time in addition to being a student and in that pathway. They're working with local companies and they're, they're engaging in welding and and that's very positive. Uh there are other things that I can share even about this Board of Education. On eight occasions, this board has received recognition by the Georgia School Boards Association as an exemplary board and on four occasions, they've received recognition as the leading edge award board for our district's innovations in the area of early learning, uh 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 you know, healthcare innovations with the um, the uh telehealth services and mobile medical units that our students receive and so many others. So the point I will make to you is that we hear you, we hear your concerns. Obviously, we, all of us up here have to prioritize students' needs and I am proud of the fact that for prior to this, this recommendation, each of the previous six years, I've recommended a reduction in the millage rate. And you heard from our CFO when she quantified how much money that was that was not, uh that, that was saved by taxpayers, but the reality is, is that you saw all of the unfunded mandates that the state has put forth. Another thing I'll share with you is when the state provides funds for raises for certified personnel, they never provide enough funding to cover all of a school district certified personnel. So then the school district is left with the decision, do we pick winners and losers or do we pick up the tab on those certified teachers or other employees who are not part of what the state is funding because the state, when they make this money available, they give you a list of the certified positions that they're funding. And it doesn't include all certified personnel in a school district. So we made the decision as a district to make sure that we include those certified personnel who weren't included in the state's uh issuance of that twenty-five hundred dollars. And that was uh at a cost of about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to the school district. Of course, we provided step increases for all of our certified and classified employees because we've got to retain, we've got to be reasonably competitive with salaries. We can't match necessarily going net or de cab or A P S in terms of their salary for a beginning teacher, but we have increased our salary in my tenure from thirty-eight thousand dollars for a beginning teacher to about fifty thousand dollars and that's real, that's improvement. This board has approved those recommendations annually as part of the budget process to make sure that we were trying to increase the salaries of our employees because what we have is a national teacher shortage. At no time in previous generations has this been the case, but we have a national teacher shortage and it's fueled primarily because there are fewer individuals who are choosing and electing to go into education programs at the college level to become teachers. So what do you have to do? You have to have alternative certification programs. You have to recruit people who are not traditionally educated, you know, in college for a traditional education major, but you have to bring them in and then we have to put resources toward getting them trained through professional learning and development to become content proficient in the subjects that they're teaching. And this costs money, it does, but we can't necessarily put the genie back in the bottle on the national teacher shortage. We have to be innovative in the way that we try to address that. And a couple of ways we've addressed it is we have Elevate K twelve, which is where we contract with uh we, with a company that provides teachers remotely who may live in North Carolina or Tennessee, but who are highly qualified in the content areas, say like physics or world language. And they, on a big mondo screen in a classroom, they teach those students daily. We have the technology where students can interface and interact with those teachers. That's not our first choice. Our first choice is always an in-person, highly qualified and content proficient teacher. But we can't put that genie back in the bottle about a national teacher shortage. So we have to make sure that we're innovative to make sure that we're providing the most qualified and content proficient teachers for our students. So again, we hear you, we thank you for your uh, your vigorous and earnest participation and our board will be deliberating for the next week on the recommendation uh and uh and we will move forward. But again, I do join Mr. Kellecheck in saying let's come together and work together. Uh but this is a packed house uh for typically for what would be the case for a board meeting. And we have the, we have a need for mentors, additional mentors to commit to mentoring our students. We have a need for other uh positive involvement, right? Whether you have children in this school district or not, there's an opportunity to agree to maybe sit and read with a child, right? We want to be, you know, we want to be the change that we want to see in the world or in our school district, to paraphrase Gandhi. We want, we should be that change that we wish to see. And I encourage you and invite you to come and join us because the education of our children, there's nothing, few things more important than educating our children and and they won't always learn at the same rate. They won't always produce the top scores on standardized state assessments. But I've always believed that students and children are more than a standardized test score. But even with that, we continue to work hard to get the gains that, some of the gains that I've shared with you tonight. So thank you for your indulgence and thank you, Madam Vice Chairwoman.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Oates. The cabinet has provided numerous presentations under information. I'd like to ask the board members to please review the information. With that said, would the like, would the board like to take a five-minute recess? If not, we will continue with our meeting. All right, please review the June twenty-twenty-four board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There is no old business and there is no new business. The cabinet has provided an overview for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion? Is there a motion for a consent agenda that does not include the millage rate adoption action item?
Second, I keep.
A motion. Let me one second, let me write that down, Mandy. A motion has been made to have a consent agenda that does not include the millage rate adoption action item. Do I have a all in favor? None opposed, seven to zero. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel?
So moved, Justin.
And a motion to go into executive session as to discuss personnel has been made by Justin and second by Janie. Is there any discussion? All in favor? None opposed. The motion carries six to zero. I'm sorry, Pam, I forgot about you, seven to zero. Thank you. All right, we are going into executive session. Where we guys? That way?
Thank you.
Hi, Derek. We are back in We are back in open session at, what time is it? 9:23. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
So moved, Justin.
A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Justin and second by Janie. The meeting is concluded at 9:23. All in favor? Closed. The meeting is concluded at 9:23 with a seven to zero vote. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, thank you.